Here. Councilman Stephen White.
Here.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump. Councilman Herb Curtis. City manager Nate Stansberry.
Present.
City attorney Brian Bailey.
He's here somewhere.
Finance manager Joe Stolberg.
Here.
Chief Mike Hugley.
Here.
Chief Jimmy Suttles. Building and zoning enforcement Marty Lewis.
Here.
Streets commissioner Mike Starrett.
Here.
Sanitary board of director Dean Evans.
Here.
AmeriCorps director Laura Anderson.
Okay. Uh, we have one person signed in to speak, uh, Mary James, if you would. It's nice to have both you and Melvin here this evening. If you want to come to the podium so everyone can hear, please. Okay. Why, I think that James had a specific request, so I don't know.
Okay. First of all, uh, Melvin and I, I would like to request that sewage be put up Smith Run Road here in Weston. Uh, Melvin talked to Ray earlier today. Uh, he is supposed to get back with Melvin and, uh, so I don't know whether this is just a formality, but I was told that I needed to bring that up at this meeting. So, uh, that's number one. Number two, I'm here for the, the Cade. I heard that they were going to discuss the Cade grant today, and I'd like to know what's going on with it. That's my main two reasons for being here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. He called me long.
We spoke before the meeting and asked them to come to the sanitary board meeting on Thursday.
Okay.
Discuss the sewer extension. Yeah, Thursday at, uh, four thirty at the office on North Main.
Um.
Usually Mondays, but I think we rescheduled this week. Or not, this Thursday, next Thursday. Sorry.
So that would be the fifteenth, Mary. At four thirty. Where's the location? At the sanitary board office.
Oh, okay.
They have a really nice conference room. And you know Dean.
Sure do. Come on, my boy.
Okay, uh, next, we have Laura Anderson to give us an update on AmeriCorps. All right.
Can I move them lights or anything?
Um, if everyone can see, um,
Okay.
I think it's pretty visible.
Okay.
Um, so I'm Laura Anderson. I am the, uh, AmeriCorps program director for the city of Weston. Um, the AmeriCorps program, if you're not familiar, uh, helps communities like ours and it brings, um, uh, good new crew of volunteers, um, to our community. Uh, the goals for the program are to encourage healthy lifestyles by creating opportunities for community members. Support our, our public education by providing a safe and connected environment for students to grow and develop skills and encourage economic opportunities by organizing events, supporting existing events, and highlighting these activities through social media and community engagement. Um, so the main areas of focus that we're gonna be, uh, addressing in particular is an after-school program for Lewis County, uh, middle school students and the city of Weston Parks and Recreation Department. Um, we're looking to host an estimated eighteen members, um, during the year of service. And, uh, AmeriCorps positions are broke down into hours. So by saying we're gonna have eighteen members, that doesn't mean that we're gonna have eighteen members that are full-time. A lot of this, uh, a lot of these people can't commit to that, so that's just, uh, that's why that number seems a little high. Um, the middle school program is something that's gonna take some time to build, um, just like everything else. Uh, the pillars that I've so far really tried to identify and feel like it's really important, uh, for our students is physical and emotional safety, academic and skills enrichment, a strong school partnership, a student voice and choice, and community and family engagement. Um, I have been in connection with multiple organizations, um, to get their support by either partnering with us or giving educational opportunities. Um, you know, obviously the biggest supporter, uh, and, and, uh, that we're gonna need is the Lewis County Board of Education and the Robert L. Bland, uh, School Administration, which we've met with and they're very excited and identified that this is definitely a need in our community. Um, West Virginia Extension Office is always happy to offer education opportunities and services there. Um, the, uh, West Virginia Development Hub, I've, I'm pretty, uh, connected with that organization. Um, the West Virginia After-School Network, uh, is a great resource that I've been digging into. Um, West Virginia DEP, they have free educational, uh, material that we can take advantage of, um, partnering with, uh, West Virginia Grant Resources, the Lewis County Senior Center, and the Weston Arts Council. Um, so we're looking at nine AmeriCorps members to facilitate this after-school program. Um, the program will be situated in Robert L. Bland Middle School and, uh, with a, uh, collective, uh, collaboration effort between the Lewis County Board of Education, Robert L. Bland Middle School, and the city of Weston. Um, the Lewis County Senior Center supports the program by creating an intergenerational environment through volunteering and plans to apply for a grant that will align with this program. Uh, partnering with the Weston Arts Council allows, allow students to collaborate on, uh, various art projects, including the refashion show in November. Uh, the city is collaborating with West Virginia Grant Resources to secure a Twenty-First Century Grant to improve the after-school program. Upon receiving this grant, uh, the after-school program will be able to offer field trips, host guest speakers, provide recreational equipment, organize enrichment activities, and have an onsite liaison to offer more opportunities for the students. Um, when we met with the staff, uh, and the administration at the middle school, they suggested that the program, uh, be run Monday through Thursday from three fifteen to five thirty. Uh, they tend to not have, uh, really good attendance and they kind of shut down especially for, uh, football games and things. So that was their suggestion. The Lewis County Board of Education, they currently offer bus services to four different locations in the county. Um, that leaves the middle school at five thirty. I've met with, uh, the child nutrition director Cynthia Nesselrode, and we discussed the different options for the nutrition program. And these students would definitely benefit from an additional warm meal during the program, and there are federal funds and programs that will offset that cost. Um, we've requested that the Lewis County Board of Education support the program by considering including this into the twenty twenty-five Lewis County School levy. Uh, we will be requesting that the Lewis County Board of Education consider including the cost of kitchen staff in the planning for their twenty twenty-five Lewis County school budget. Um, so the Parks and Rec side is, uh, we're looking at seven full-time AmeriCorps members to serve with the city of Weston Parks and Rec Department. Let's see. The current organization and partnerships that I've already been in contact with would be the, uh, Weston Arts Council, the Lewis County Senior Center, the Lewis County Farmers Market, our library, the Glass Museum, and Project Wet and Project Learning Tree. Those are both free DEP, uh, educational, uh, material and training, uh, that we can offer, um, at, you know, just kind of set up a pop-up event. Um, members' focus will include city beautification projects, walkability and trails, adult recreation leagues, youth and adult programming, community engagement, social media and marketing, community-wide service projects, volunteer recruitment, economic development, health and wellness, and events and festival planning. Um, so that's the gist of the AmeriCorps program that we have right now. Uh, there's been a lot of other things that I've been doing in the meantime to really, uh, try to get people interested and see that there are things that we can do. Um, Reese, over the December, uh, we really were hoping to have, uh, New Year, or rolling into New Year's event. Uh, ultimately, the weather did not cooperate and it's been very wet and rainy. So we have not been able to, uh, use the roller skates and the surface. Um, but hopefully Saturday, uh, if the rain holds off during the, um, Glass Museum's Chocolate Fest, we should be able to get some roller skating. Um, I helped, uh, well, I organized a holiday and a Halloween house decorating contest, which got really, uh, strong results and everybody was excited to get, uh, recognized. And, uh, I think it felt, it got people out and driving around to enjoy all the lights. Uh, I am the liaison for the city of Weston for the Guardians of the West Fork. Uh, this organization, uh, really should be in Weston, so I'm excited to get them, um, here and get some folks out on the water. Um, I support the city manager with, uh, Facebook posts and creating flyers to highlight the events and activities. Um, I'm an active member of the Hubcap Community Effort. Uh, I've been attending meetings with local organizations. Um, the, uh, cohort for the West Virginia Develop, Community Development Hub Coaching for Transformation Fellowship Program. Um, I have agreed to, uh, take on the marketing manager position for the Lewis County Farmers Market. Um, during the Christmas parade, I, uh, took on the Facebook Live, uh, streaming, um, because people were sick, Ray. Um, yeah, uh, and then, um, organizing site visits for after-school programs in central West Virginia because, uh, we want to see what other communities are doing and we have some really successful, uh, after-school programs happening around us.
Does have a comment.
I really liked how you, um, posted all of the events surrounding the Glass Museum, everything. I actually wanted to give you some feedback. I had someone from Elkins contact me about things to do. I directed them to that page because they were initially, had just heard about the Glass Museum and they said, "We've heard somewhere on social media, there is a whole list." So thank you so much for posting that because there, there is a lot going on and to keep these tourists in town for a little bit, I think that's great. And also with what you're organizing at Holt Square, the maple syrup tasting as well. Um, I sent them all that information in your Facebook post. So, um, I think it gets people downtown and maybe shop some stores that are open that day. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, I'm also very excited about the after-school program.
Thank you. I am too. I think it's, it's something that, uh, we've had an after-school program and, um, it's been gone for too many years and it's definitely something that, uh, our students in our community, um, can really, uh, it can help everybody where I want to include community-wide service projects each semester and really get the youth into, uh, feeling how good, like that good feeling whenever you volunteer, whenever you're supporting something and you get that sense of ownership. So I'm excited.
A couple of more things, um. I know that Debbie had mentioned last time, remember? It just came up that, uh, the opioid money that we were getting, wanted to see education. I don't know if we, if this is an avenue perhaps for part of the money, but she wanted to see education included in that. Also, the last thing I wanted to mention is, I think it's wonderful that you're teaming up with the Arts Council for this.
I, I want to team up with any organization that will, yes, that will, that aligns with what we have going on, so.
We're very well-rounded, the group that you have encompassed and would give students maximum and keep them busy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. Since we've been now approved or on track, I'm assuming that you'll be involved with that to some degree as well.
Yes, yes. Yes, well, honestly, these, these programs are, you know, they could, um, they could really benefit from the, an AmeriCorps being present and being able to help move things along. Um, you know, as long as everything aligns with our goals, uh, then we want to put AmeriCorps members and this program, uh, directly aligned with everything.
And pardon me if I missed it, Family Resource Network, do you have a partnership established there?
I have not reached out to them yet. Um, I know that they will support, uh, the, this program simply, uh, they've supported the AmeriCorps program in the past. Um, they've got a really amazing, uh, group over there and, um, yeah, any organization that needs help or, uh, you know, we could benefit from that. I definitely want them aligned with the AmeriCorps program.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Laura? Looks like the program's really coming along.
And we are on, we are, uh, the, the folks that we're working with on this grant building, uh, is, they're really pleased with, uh, the fact that we are ahead of their original schedule that they had set up, which has been great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you have in your packet the minutes from the regular session on January second and the work session on January sixteenth. If there are no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes as distributed.
I make a move to approve the minutes as distributed.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, uh, reports of city boards, commissions, and agencies. The cemetery board has a meeting on Monday, February the thirteenth at four P M. Historic landmarks next meeting is Thursday, February the eighth at six. Uh, you do have an application from Audrey Burkett and Rebecca Young for, uh, membership to the Historic Landmarks Commission. I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second to approve the applications of Audrey Burkett and Rebecca Young. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Update of Phase One facade grant.
Joe.
Thank you, Joe, for letting me throw you into the bus.
It's okay. I'm gonna give the partial update to the best that I know. Um, so the HLC awarded, uh, ten facade grants. Um, and so far, five of them have been, um, completed to completion. Uh, so what's been required is folks have needed to say, "Okay, we're done," turn in their backup paperwork. Um, and then the city manager and the city code enforcement officer go out and review that, um, property and make sure that it appears that the work was done like it was supposed to be done, um, and everything's to code. Uh, and so far, we've had, uh, five families or organizations, um, meet all those requirements and they've been, uh, they've received their facade reimbursement check. Um, and so that's the, um, the Tom's family on Court Avenue, the Reed household on Cottage, um, Lewis County Senior Center, um, Pink Wine Glass related to its property on Center Avenue, um, and the Westfall household on Main Ave. Um, so those folks have all, uh, fully completed, um, and then we still have five that are outstanding, um, that haven't yet.
What stage of completion are the remaining five in?
It's a great question. Uh, short answer is, I have no clue. Uh, so we wait generally until they turn in their stuff to say that we're completed. Um, I, just from what I've heard, and I don't know, maybe Marty and Nate can, can shed some more light on this, but from what I've heard through the grapevine, some folks have really struggled to find contractors, um, who will complete work in a timely fashion. Um, and so I think that there may even be some that are at the zero percent completion phase, um, because they haven't had any luck finding people to do that.
One, one, Kipson, Kipsonville, Barbara Sims, she cannot get a contractor. So she's hoping that when you all do it again, she can reconsider that, and it will come out.
Okay.
And that's all I have for you. Do you have any specific questions? I may not have answers, but I'll try.
Lewis County first should be finished in the near future.
Uh, they're ready to submit.
Yep.
Okay.
Good deal. I look forward to seeing it.
You will.
Thank you, Joe.
You sure can.
Yeah.
Okay, next, uh, implementing Phase Two facade grant for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. And I think when we originally discussed the program, we were setting aside ARPA dollars. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to, to set, to do the second phase of that grant program.
I'll move to approve the second phase of the facade grant program for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Sherri, when do you think that that program might roll, be able to be rolled out?
Hopefully, we'll have it in March rolling out because
Okay.
here's the problem with, with contractors, we need to get on their list fairly soon. You know,
Yeah.
to get the, the, the best position to have these things done during the summer months when it's warm.
Okay.
Joe, real quick, how have we handled those transactions? Are we just paying those folks reimbursements from the general fund and then we'll seek ARPA reimbursement? Or we've been cutting them checks directly from ARPA?
Yes, we've been cutting them from the general fund and we will seek ARPA reimbursement.
That's fine. I just was, well, I thought about it and we can.
There was gonna be an ARPA check at HLC and then HLC would handle it. So at some point in the process, um, HLC communicated to the city that they had locked up the numbers first.
Okay.
So Mary, we just funded the second round. Uh-huh. American Rescue Plan funds. A couple of years ago, we received that. It was due to COVID. It's federal dollars that we were given to spend. So, um, I'll go, I'll take this information back to landmarks, historic landmarks, and let them know, and we'll begin working on that. This year, we're going to do our, our kickoff meeting a little differently than what we did last year. Um, last year, we had some incomplete applications. And I, it was an excess in the fact, uh, success in the fact that a lot of folks who had never completed a grant before participated and actually applied for the grant. This year, we want to have enough people on hand to have an overview, a brief overview of the program, but also an application in hand, so everyone leaves there with a completed application other than your estimate that you will get from your contractor. So try to make it a little easier for folks. Probably not. But I'll let you know. Okay?
Hey, the Weston Planning Commission will have their next meeting Wednesday, February twenty-first at four thirty P M. And, uh, they're working on the updating the comprehensive plan, so all voices are welcome.
Mary, you may want to make mention that we had our elections last meeting and, um, Alan Westfall's the new president of the Planning Commission. I think Dan Von was gonna be the VP, right, the vice president? So if you've got any planning question, or Planning Commission questions, feel free to reach out to Alan directly and if he doesn't answer, let me know and I'll, I'll get him.
I'll board him with questions.
Not a part of it.
Uh, Board of Parks and Recreation, next meeting, there is no meeting scheduled as of yet. We do have an application for, for Miranda Hawkins for Parks and Rec.
I'll move to approve Miranda Hawkins for the volunteer position of Parks and Rec.
Awesome.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, the Lewis County E D A meeting will have their next meeting February twenty-eighth at five P M. Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, next meeting Tuesday, February thirteenth at six. The Code Appeals Board, Thursday, February fifteenth at six. The Tree Commission, Thursday, February twenty-ninth at four P M. And you have an application from Guillermo Sid.
Sid.
Sid. Uh, who is a certified arborist for the Tree Commission.
I'll move to approve the application of Guillermo Sid for the Tree Commission.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there anyone here from the Arts Council?
No, they were supposed to come. I can give that update. I was, I attended the meeting.
Okay.
Laura did too. Um, they have their next meeting February thirteenth at six P M. They do have a, um, uh, stationary place to meet now. They'll be meeting in West Hall, um, monthly. What, they had a great turnout for their, uh, first, first meeting, um, back after COVID and some hardships, I think. Um, also, they are, of course, as Laura mentioned, teaming up with AmeriCorps. They have had a couple of activities. They've had some pop-up drawing sessions, um, at, uh, the library. They have a weekly, um, yarn and crochet and, and string art, uh, meeting every Monday. I'm not sure of the time. I think it might be six o'clock. Um, they are looking at having a play this summer, um, collaborating with Landmarks Commission on, you know how they had the summer music series, I think that they wanted to. you know how they had the summer music series? I think that they wanted to collaborate with that. Also collaborate with Landmarks on some art throughout town. And, um, there's one more thing. The farmer's market. They wanted to collaborate on that, maybe add some music to that, some music opportunities, so. Those are some of the things that they're working on. They're really working on several things. That's just an overview, overview.
Can I, can I just interject for a second? I think the, the Arts Council may need some, uh, examination by, by city council in the sense of, I'm not quite sure how they were established. I think if I look back through, it was by resolution. Um, in twenty-sixteen or something to that, that nature. Um, we, we do have some kind of fund on hand that gets sent to us. It's a quarterly statement where there's cash in the bank from the previous iteration of the, of the Arts Council. They were operating, I think, underneath of a, a five oh one C three status. And I, I think when we, when they have fallen by the wayside or stopped meeting, they failed to fill out all their documentation and stuff with that. And I think it was about six months ago, we got a letter from the Secretary of State that said there's, their entity essentially had been dissolved for lack of reporting. Um, so when we looked into that a little bit further, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that they, they had some bylaws filed with the Secretary of State that talked about their assets and what was to happen with those when, if their entity dissolved. And I think they had spoken to giving their assets to, um, the Historic Landmarks Commission if they failed, ceased to, ceased to exist. That hasn't happened. Those funds are still sitting out there. And frankly, I don't think we can even access them. Um, because I think the previous members of the council are still the signers of the checks and all that stuff on the, on the bank, bank accounts. So, um, there's a lot of unknowns and uncertainties there. I, I think before they get to rocking and rolling, it would behoove them to, to try to figure out what they're, what kind of entity they're gonna be. If they're gonna step back into this role as a, a city-appointed board or, or council or whatnot. Then I think we probably need to get some ducks in a row there to make sure the, the right things have been followed procedure-wise and all that good stuff. If they're gonna be a separate five oh one C three outside of the city, then, you know, those, there's a question of those funds and what happens to those funds, I think, at that point in time. So, I don't know who, I haven't been to an Arts Council meeting, but I, I would appreciate if somebody could follow up with them about that. And like I said, I think that's probably an item that you all have to entertain here in the future. And, and all, all I'm bringing that up for is I want them to be successful and I want them to be doing things the right way and, and not get themselves into any kind of, you know, tax issues or anything of that nature, so.
Here's what I know about it.
Sure.
Okay. I do know that there are some members of the old board that are still in attendance and still on the board.
Okay.
Um, it is my understanding that once some of these reports are completed, that they could be reinstated. In the past, how they worked, they were an entity of the city with their own five oh, five oh one C three. They, their activities all fell under the city insurance and they were appointed by the city. So.
Yeah, and that's.
That's what I know about.
Just a question of how they want to operate going forward, and I don't have any issues with any of those things.
They have to be either or though, do they? A five oh one
Yeah.
C three or
I'm really
A board appointed.
Frankly, probably outside of my depth to answer any questions in that, in that regard or give me any kind of advice, Mr. City Attorney.
John Law would be a good person for them to
Okay.
Talk with.
And frankly, yeah, it's one of those things where they're created by resolution. I don't know if that's kosher, you know, in the, in the annals of, uh, municipal law, all that good stuff, so we probably should do a little bit of homework on it.
So is that different than the other boards and committees that we've had? Landmarks has been around forever?
Yeah, and they, they had ordinance passed when they were established and talks about their membership and all that other stuff and I.
Landmarks did?
Yeah, Historic Landmarks did.
Okay.
Um, Arts Council, like I said, I, when I went back through there, all I could find was a resolution. And so it may be, it may be enough. I don't know, but I think there's some questions there and it was just, it was some rocks I didn't bother overturning in the past because there wasn't a functioning Arts Council, so I wasn't too concerned with it.
I think we're all excited to see them get started back up again and we want to work with them as best we can to, to make them successful. Uh, next, the Weston Municipal Appeals Board. Uh, we do, i- is it appropriate, Brian, at this time, or would you prefer, uh, wait?
Under, uh, under new business, we have a ordinance for municipal fees that, that is gonna change the fee structure. It doesn't necessarily change the makeup of the board. Um, so the, the rules of the, of the, of the two thousand nine municipal fee ordinance indicate that the board members serve at the will and pleasure of council, which is broad language for, if you want to get somebody else on the board, you can kick somebody off and put somebody else on. But otherwise, I think you would, if, if you, if you're gonna appoint or reappoint or whatnot tonight, I think that's, that's gonna be fine. It's, 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 it's gonna be, they're gonna be appointed under this prior, uh, municipal fee ordinance. Not, not the one that we're getting ready to read now, which doesn't change anything. There, there's still the same people being the same, not, literally not the same people, but the same positions. Somebody from council, somebody from the public, and somebody from the Chamber of Commerce. So.
So we're.
World's your oyster as far as appointing people, as far as I'm concerned. No, it just says that will and pleasure to council. Currently, right now, it's just Chris Bailey. As a Chamber of Commerce member.
Hi, Chris.
Could be.
But we have, uh.
So you, 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 you need, uh, uh, Randy Bowen was the council representative.
Yeah, that's right.
And so hi- his spot's vacant. And, and council or the municipal fees ordinance indicates that when there's a vacancy, that person shall, that, that person's replacement shall be reappointed or appointed in the same manner as his was prior. So I think the mayor, the mayor gets to appoint the council member to the, to the board.
And we have a letter from the Chamber of Commerce making Chris Bailey's appointment official. So I think we're okay to entertain a motion to approve his membership to the Municipal Appeals Board. Okay. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And, uh, I, I would like for council to consider the appointment of our esteemed counselor, Stephen White, to the Municipal Appeals Board.
I'll move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
You're so welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay. Uh, next for outside agencies, Guardians of the West Fork, Wednesday, February twenty-first. And this is a rescheduled meeting. They weren't able to make that first date. And we did receive in your packet the congratulatory letter from West Virginia On Track. And we're supposed to have a web conference between Hubcap and On Track, and that's coming up. I don't know when it is. Is it this week, Thursday, maybe? Didn't bring my calendar. I plan to go to the city building and we'll just do the web conference from there.
Two PM on Thursday.
Okay. So if any of you would like to, to come to the city building, Nate will take care of refreshments. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, we have one position and one alternate remaining. The Tree Commission, there are two positions available. And Historic Landmarks, two positions available. Oh, we're good. We're good. Okay. Sanitary Board Report.
Good evening. I won't make this any longer than the meetings already been or gonna be, so I'll just mention a couple of things. Um, just to say that we do have one of our trucks down, our two hundred, two thousand seventeen Chevy truck is down. It appears that it's the transmission, so that's, after we get a couple of estimates, we'll decide what we're gonna do with that. The other.
And Dave's truck?
Yeah. The other thing is, um, last month, uh, we talked about the finance situation as far as the, um, receivables and the fact that we didn't do any, um, terminations because of Christmas and we didn't do them for November because of Thanksgiving or did, did a very few in Thanksgiving time. This month, uh, we hit it really hard. If you look at your report, we did send out about twice as many past due termination letters, uh, five hundred and seventy-five to be exact. Followed them up immediately with one hundred and thirty-three second termination, um, letters. And last week, I think, was one of our record weeks. Just in last week itself, uh, we took in over a hundred and seven thousand dollars in just a week's time, just off of those past due letters. So they know we mean business now. We did do some terminations today. They're gonna do some more tomorrow. Uh, and I do think one of the records that we, that we have held since we've just started doing credit cards is in one day, Debbie and I took in over nine thousand dollars worth of credit card, uh, receipts just because of those past due letters. So they do work and we continue to hit those really hot and heavy. The other thing is our meeting date did change, uh, because of conflict of scheduling, uh, to Thursday, February the fifteenth at four-thirty at the same place. So if you, uh, wanna plan to meet there. Receivables for the month of January still was two hundred and seven thousand, five hundred forty-two, fourteen. Stormwater was thirty-four, thirty-three, eighty-four. And your two percent tax was one thousand five hundred twenty-nine, twenty-six. You have any questions? I'll be glad to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let you move on.
Is this stage meeting changed just for that?
Just for that, just, just.
Okay, thank you. Because that's the same time as Landmark.
I'm sorry.
That's no problem. It's hard not to miss a meeting. When you reschedule.
Just to be sure, what, what was that again?
Thursday?
The fifteenth. Fifteenth at?
Four thirty.
Forty.
Questions for Dee? Okay, thank you, Dee.
No, that's not Landmarks.
Okay, next Finance Report.
All right, I got a few things to go through, so I'll try to keep it short. Um, reports in your packet. I don't have anything, uh, particularly exciting to point out to you this month. Um, but I would like you to go start on maybe page forty-four. Um, and see our justification for the transfer from general fund to vacant structures. Um, so I'm asking for a transfer this month of a hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion to transfer? Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next thing is, um, check detail report. It's a report review every month. That starts on page forty-five.
Got a quick question.
Sure. That's the amount that we took in, yep.
In one month?
Wait to point for, we're gonna talk about. I'm sorry, were you?
No. Are we ready? You need us to approve the expense detail. Uh, page forty-five. Through fifty-two.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, page fifty-three, um, there's a budget adjustment for your consideration. Um, later on in the meeting, we're gonna be, uh, you'll have the opportunity to discuss, um, the police pay scale. Um, this budget adjustment, uh, gives you the opportunity to do something with the pay scale if you choose. Um, state statute says that you have to have the money budgeted before you can obligate it. Um, so I'm asking you to go ahead and budget that money. Budgeting the money does not, uh, require you to do anything to obligate it. Um, you can budget this money and, uh, and then choose to do nothing, um, with the thing later down the list. But if you wanted to do anything with the police pay scale later down the list, um, this budget adjustment would allow you to do so. Um, what I'm suggesting is that we move twelve thousand five hundred dollars from our contingency line to the police department line. Um, you'll remember that contingency line starts off the beginning year, about twenty-five thousand dollars is what we shoot for. And then we, we build it up over the year, um, when, uh, taxes, fees and fines come in a little higher than we expected, we build that up. Um, so I'm asking that you take twelve thousand five hundred out of that, move it to police department. Um, and that'll give you the freedom, uh, to possibly take action later if you choose.
Are questions or are, are we ready to entertain a motion to make that budget adjustment?
Well, and so, um, Nate, do you know what page the?
Yeah, why don't we kick this discussion to the police pay scale item on our agenda? And if we decide to go with that scale, we'll just make a budget revision motion then, and then
Okay.
Do that and then enact the police scale.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I think we should compare, talk about it all at the same time.
Okay, so we'll move on to collections contracts.
Do you need a motion for that, to move this?
I think we're good.
Are we, okay.
Okay, so there's a collection contract starting on page fifty-four. Um, so a little bit of background. As I understand it, uh, cities have at their disposal basically three tools for collections. Um, one is using a collections agency, one is leaning properties, and the other is taking people to court, whether it be magistrate or search report, depending on proper jurisdiction. Um, so collections, a collections agency is usually expensive. Um, taking people to court is both expensive and burdensome. Um, putting liens on property is not expensive and it's not burdensome. Um, so a lot of cities just do the leaning process, and I think historically that's what we've done. Because, uh, it's, any, any cost associated with it, you can build into the lien itself, so you make that money back. Um, but it's playing the long game and it's a long game that we don't always win. Um, I was discussing, uh, collections with some other municipalities and cities around us this month, um, and particularly the city of Elkins. The city of Elkins has a first due fire program, um, and we were, I was talking about collections and what that looks like in the county. Uh, one of the things the treasurer recommended, she said, you have, uh, one chance to set your culture um, in the county when, when you're looking at doing that kind of stuff. Uh, and you want to set your, your culture around collections so that folks know that the, the city will collect what they find and what they feed. Um, and to do that, she suggested that we pull all three tools out of the toolkit. Um, we should engage a collections agency, we should be ready to put liens on property, we should be letting, ready to take people to court. Um, and so what I have for you is a collections contract, uh, with the group Datamax. Um, Datamax has two different collection sides. There's HDL, which does collections on BNO taxes. We've had a longstanding contract with HDL to do collections on BNO. Um, and then this side is collections for, uh, fees and fines that the city may impose. Um, so that can include everything from municipal service fees, first due fire fees, vacant structure fees. Um, reimbursements on tear down fees, reimbursements on trash cleanup fees, all those things um, can be sent to Datamax on this side of the collections department. Um, the cost is twenty-five percent, so it's expensive. Um, so if, uh, if they feel that they've, uh, and so how that process works is, um, if, uh, if a one hundred dollar fine is, is sent to collections, um, and they feel that they've negotiated the payment of it, um, when that gets, when the, when the city receives payment, um, Datamax then bills the city for twenty-five dollars, um, uh, because they negotiated that payment. So we're verifying that that payment's been made and then, um, we're paying them their share, uh, if they've been responsible for negotiating that payment. Especially with the other things that we're talking about, I think it makes a lot of sense to pursue this and add this to the toolkit right now. Um, yeah, I, I do think that the reason we've done liens in the past is pretty clear. It's because it's, it's a long. It's because it's, it's a long game, but you collect all one hundred dollars if you collect it all. Um, but, uh, I think that, being aggressive, um, especially going into this new year, is gonna be important that we're setting right culture and expectations.
I'm familiar with Datamax. We do have, um, I don't know how to say it politely. We do have, in regards to the vacant building fees, we do have, um, some repeat customers who are not participating.
Yeah, and part of, um, so, so the first thing I wanna say is that our, our collections rate on most things are par. For the course, I've talked to other cities and we're par, even on the vacant structures, we're par. Because, uh, I think part of, part of what's going on there is, there are some folks who, if, if they weren't bad actors, they wouldn't be there in the first place.
Right.
Um, but we do have the, the trouble, when we, when we don't win the lean game is when things go to tax sale. Um, and I think you do stand that threat especially on that list. Um, so I think this is, this is one more opportunity and option to pursue those things and say seventy-five dollars is better than zero dollars.
Right. And not a, all of the invoices will go to Datamax, just the,
Right.
Outstanding that have been outstanding and.
And we can, um, so, so just, you know, council, it would be your will to, to what extent we utilize this. Um, I am really eyeballing, uh, what, what we're gonna start talking about in July. Um, and, uh, what I'm looking at in, in terms of a timeline is, uh, I'm not looking to send anything to collections until it's at least six months past due.
Right.
Um, because, one, I think it's right to just give people a chance.
Sure.
It's right to send them a reminder. You know, I sometimes, things get lost in the mail, it happens. Um, so I'm not looking to beat anybody up before it's time, but there does come a point when you say, this is due.
So is council ready to take action on the collections contract with Datamax? Would someone like to make a motion? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have for you. Do you have any other questions for me on anything in the finance package portion?
I don't.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, street department.
Packets sit in your, um, I'm sorry, it's in your packet and, um, only thing I would like to add to it is, down at the bottom, which you can see, the hours that we had in getting rid of the snow that we had, quite a few hours. And, uh, guys were tired and, uh, then if you're gonna look at the hunting on the salt, that's two, uh, truckloads of salt. To get rid of almost fifteen, sixteen inches of snow in two weeks.
Wow. Any questions for Mike?
I, I would like to compliment the street department on their snow removal because they did a lot better job than the state did.
And it snowed non-stop for four days. I will say that.
What's that?
It snowed non-stop for four days. Yes, you guys did a great job.
Thank you. I'll tell the guys, it was a long fifteen days, I'll be honest with you.
Okay. Next, we'll move to police department.
I have nothing. I have another reports in the packet.
Does, does anyone have any questions about the report in the packet?
What's his number one? Did you? I'm sorry, I mentioned the last time about the cars parking the wrong way on the streets. Have you looked into that?
I spoke with the ones on center and I just spoke with one on four street right before the meeting.
Thank you. Center was really bad.
Mm-hmm, fourth is too. Any other questions for Chief Posey?
Thank you.
Okay, next, fire department. It was. What's the forestry grant? Oh, okay.
Any scratches this month, Jimmy? Okay.
Uh, have you guys, as the volunteers started working on, uh, getting ready for the Fourth of July? There'll be a meeting sometime this month.
Yes. And we need to make sure Laura is included.
Oh, okay. And you.
And me. Okay. Thank you, Chief Suttle. We'll move on to building code zoning.
Um, I wanna start with, uh, a little bit of an update, um, Mariah's reports in there on the cats. But over the weekend, she did trap several over on Lynn Avenue. Um, so there's four or five that she, that she took care of over the weekend over there. They've been neutered and I think that she's found homes for all of them actually.
Some of those cats were so ill, they needed bedding.
Yeah.
And, and they were in bad shape.
Yep. Yeah, we continue to try and fight the good battle on that too, and then go around with throwaway feeding spots and that kinda stuff, but, they're, they're just as dedicated on the other end of that battle too, so. Then the only other thing I have, the mayor asked me to bring a couple of maps here tonight, that, uh, to indicate on the dilapidated houses and stuff. I don't know if you need me to come up and kinda point out what the map represents. Or, or if that works for you along with what's in the packet.
What are green and orange?
Green are the dilapidated homes that were on our, on our tear down list. The orange ones on there are, uh, vacant structures. I added that just so you could see how many we had, even though it wasn't on the, the dilapidated report.
Okay.
You can see they're scattered pretty well all over.
Well, also, we have, what we have in here, what we have, we have this.
Right, you can see the ones that are kind of in that grayish blue color. Those are the ones that we've completed the demolitions on. We just finished a round of nine here, this last week. Um, so that along with the ones that individuals have taken down, we took down twenty-five houses this year. And that's way more than I thought when we started this grant process and all. I, I, I thought we might get nine or ten at the most and to get twenty-five is, I, I'm proud of that.
Should be. Close to High Street, two fifty-four and two fifty-six. I've gotten a couple more reports on the stuff going on inside those places.
Correct me if I'm wrong here Nate, but I, I think we probably need to have some face-to-face discussion with several people involved in that, um, the property owner, as well as me and Nate and any council member that wants to sit on that too, because there was some misinformation passed along before and, and, and I think we need to have that and then we can reprioritize. They're, they're in yellow on that paper there.
Just to add to that conversation, we're, we're kinda running out of funds to deal with, with houses. And so that's where we, our conversation needs to go next is how, how are we going to try to fund more demolitions or what our next steps are? Um, I know we do have, we think enough money for three more advertisements, right Marty?
We're prob, we're probably gonna get two, or the better part of two out of what I think I have left out of the grant money. I don't have all my final dump bills from this last round, but I think we're gonna end up with enough to probably fund two and then out of what was budgeted, for, for my department anyway, pick off another one. So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have an ad submitted to the paper by Thursday, so it could be in next week's paper for three more.
Have we?
With, with your approval.
Pick those structures, cause I don't think I've had one taken down to Ward Three at all.
White Street.
Right.
And Devo.
Devo? Right, those are two.
Yeah, those are both two.
Oh, yeah, that's right, three. Steven.
We do have.
Brook Street. We have. Probably have the most, unfortunately.
We've just been following the priority list that we have, and that's, and that's how they've fallen, but, you know, yeah, and I agree, like I, I noticed, uh, Ward One was getting a lot of attention last couple of weeks on our Facebook posts, and that's just how the luck of the draw has fallen. Um, but that's one reason, one, one thing I wanna talk to you about. We were looking at the next three, and I think those are West Second Street, was where our priorities that were kinda falling and, and they were kinda skipping the list a little bit because these, these individuals had indicated willingness to sign the property over to us, which by our priority scheme, we said if we own it, we'd tear that one down first. But, I mean, I think Marty and I, we think we've got enough funds for three more this year. And so if you guys wanna do something different or, or target a different area, I think we're all ears for it. We can work on those, you know, those priorities.
One that was partially down, down there, the homeowner started working on it and then he got an illness.
Spring Street?
No.
Twelve twenty-three.
That one's on. I can tell you the net, I can tell you the homeowner's name, but I can't tell you.
It was twelve twenty-three, but it's all down.
On twelve street, yeah, it's gone.
Okay.
Yeah, now, um, part, part of the, the selection here for the next three is, we're on, we're on a time crunch too, about sixty days to get them down and get them built. Or before the, the grant time is up. We had the, we got an extension on the grant as it was, so there is, is no more extension on that. And these three, um, I've already got the shipo approval, I've already got, um, uh, corrective orders and stuff have been executed before. So it's just a matter of getting them advertised, bid and, 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 uh, awarding the bids, and then standing on the contractor, say, hey, you're gonna get these for me quick. So I, I have till, till about the beginning of April to get them done.
The, the one, one more question, I think, Rio One, Spring Street.
I talked to that guy today, actually. I, I, I can't speak for him on why he bought the property. I mean, he bought it for ten dollars. And he doesn't have the money to even pay for the asbestos. I told him he could take the, the aluminum siding off a while back to pay for his asbestos study. And he hasn't, he's taken some of the aluminum off, he hasn't cashed any of it in, he hasn't paid for any asbestos. And I told him this morning, I said, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to move along or, or we are. So.
Is he getting billed for vacant building?
He's on the, yeah, he's on the vacant list, yeah. Even the, whether they're just vacant or whether they're dilapidated, they get billed for vacant anyway.
You know who ran the hospital?
Yes.
Very quick, so, especially when the vacant building owners came about.
Is that all Marty?
Thank you, Marty.
Yep, unless you have any more questions.
Okay.
Herb, am I hearing from you? We wanna open back up the High Street discussion, is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Alright. The difficult ones.
Okay. Alright, uh, city attorney report.
I just want to make a couple of positive comments. Number one, some months of, some months ago, council passed an ordinance that gave, I'm gonna, I wanna call it a quasi-civil action for people that are complaining about dogs and dog barking to, to make a complaint to the municipal court and the municipal court handle that kinda situation. H- historically, the police had gone out and never heard a barking dog, never saw a dog, that kinda stuff. And it was just hard for the police to, to, uh, do, deal with stuff like that. And so we had a gentleman inquire and, and file a complaint in municipal court for a, for a dog issue and, that, well, that's been a few days ago. We're still trying to work through the process of that, but, just wanna let you all know that, that that ordinance actually got used and kicked off here. It's, I, I told the judge, it's kinda, we're breaking new ground with this thing and kinda,
Oh, that's good.
Kinda, it's, it, it's fun to try to figure it out, to be honest with you.
Well, that's good feedback because I know it was very frustrating for law enforcement because they were constantly getting calls and showing up and by the time, you know.
And, and there's not been a, there's not been a, um, figuring out of the whole thing yet by the court, so we're gonna have to see what the, see what court does with it. Um, and secondly, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals, I thought, had a tough situation in front of it, a few weeks ago with an issue at, uh, Center Street and Sixth Street. And the, I'm gonna use the broad phrase, the public showed up. Some, some members of the public showed up and, made all, made very cordial, very well reasoned, very friendly statements. Nobody was shaking fists at each other, nobody's wanting to go out, fight each other in the parking lot over anything in the count, the council. The BZA sat and listened and deliberated and it was just a wonderful exercise and I, I wish everybody could have been there to see how, cordial and, and humane everybody was to each other. And I, I encourage, I encourage the BZA to keep it up, regardless of whatever their outcome is. I encourage the BZA to keep it up and I encourage the public to, to keep it up that way because it was, it was just, so pleasant to sit in and, and listen to. It was, it was a very good exercise in local decision-making and local government.
Very professional.
Extremely.
Thank you.
Other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Okay, next, city clerk. You have the report in your packet. And city manager's report.
Uh, you've got my monthly, uh, status update on all of our different things going ons, I've got going on there. So if you got any questions here in a second, feel free to ask me about that. Um, I've got a few things I wanted to, uh, bring up. Um, cameras, um, we were told two, three weeks ago, they'd be out here as soon as the weather broke. Well, the weather's broken, we haven't seen them. I've called twice. Um, I'll get back on the horse this week and track them down.
What company is that?
This is Lynx out of Buchanan, and so I'm gonna do some more exploring, see what I can do there to get these things installed and just move on.
And Chantel not do this one?
No, it, it comes down to the internet, so I think predominantly, we were trying to not have to beg any internet off of anybody like a business or something like that, but I think that that's the option I'm looking at now is, you know, approaching business owners and saying, hey, can we tie into your internet at least for the, the short term to run these cameras, um, because that's, that's the major hurdle, power and internet for these locations.
Lynx has purchased the company Raven Rock, correct?
Correct, yeah.
We have a contract with Raven Rock to provide that. Remember, we upgraded? We upgraded, so it would accommodate our cameras.
Sure.
Why are they not in breach of contract?
Well, I mean, I think they, the contract, we probably could do something within the realm of the contract. I think I've hesitated because it's, it's been difficult to find anybody who will approach this project. Um, you know, the, the people who sold us the cameras, they, they, that's out of our wheelhouse as far as creating the network to be able to do those kinds of things, and the tower climbing, you know, because the, the criticality of the, of the whole network is depends on that, network node at the tower to be able to connect to all the devices together.
So we can't just hire another internet company?
Like that's.
Outside of Lynx and just go completely with Chantel or Frontier and be done.
You could, what you'd have to do is, like if we hired Chantel, we'd have to have a internet connection point at each one of these cameras. You could, what you'd have to do is like, if we hired Chantel, we'd have to have a internet connection point at each one of these cameras. So we'd be paying a bill on each camera, uh, a monthly bill, and it wouldn't be a cheap bill, you know, it'd probably be $50 a month or something like that. So that's what I was trying to avoid by building the network is that we had the upfront costs with the network creation. And then the, the cost of the internet was going to be all fed off of our current internet connection in our building that we're already paying for. So that's what we were trying to do.
And Chantel can't do that for us.
As far as build that network, not that I'm aware.
Or Frontier.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of because this is a wireless internet.
Or sudden link maybe.
I'll, I'll do some more exploring with it this month, but I'm going to do my darndest to get this thing done.
Give you permission to drive 11 miles to knock on their door.
You know, and I've done that. I've done that and no one was there, you know, in the middle of work day. So I rang the doorbell. They had a fancy doorbell and they knew I was there. They took my picture and called me very shortly afterwards. So, um, I'll track them down this week.
Get one star rating.
Yep. Um, I'm right there with you. Um.
Right. Yeah.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah. Well, that's been a year and a half, two years.
Sure. Um, the banner project, we're working with the Mountain Air Military Museum on that. I think that that's off and running. Um, we're going to meet this week to talk some more logistics of it all, but we're looking to continue that same arrangement as last year where we hung the banners. And I collected the renewal fees for the banners and then, um, uh, turn those funds over to the military museum once it's all said and done. And there was some questions about the mowing bids. So those have been advertised at this point. Um, the cemetery board would like to take a look at their portion of the mowing bids first. They want to try to manage that contract themselves, which I think is fair and, and needed to a degree. Um, so they're going to meet this, this month, and we're going to have that on the agenda for them to consider. So mowing bid should be in front of you guys at the next, at the March first meeting to allow, you know, mowing to be, begin by the middle of March, end of March, as the weather necessitates. Um, administration assistant, um, we, we had a, a Wesleyan student approach us about doing a criminal justice internship, uh, from, from the college. And so it was, it was to be an unpaid internship, but I talked, talked her into, um, being paid during that portion and working on some grant work with us at the same time. Um, so she started, she's working three days a week, about 12 hours a week. Um, I, I made her pay $11 an hour. Um, and so she's going to be working, our first grant we're targeting is the community block grants that I think are due in March or April. And we're going to try to, um, get some sidewalk funds is I think our initial, uh, thrust for that. So she, she'll most likely be with us till the end of the semester. And so I just thought that that, the extra hands. Um, she's going to also assist Judy a little bit with municipal court for her internship experience. She's been riding along with, uh, some of the police officers and things of that nature. So, um, trying to make it a good partnership between the two of us. Okay. Um, annexation. So we had our annexation meeting last month. Um, nothing really of note, I will say, has developed since that meeting. I did receive a couple. And we counted through our responses from the meeting. We had two people who were interested in annexing. One was out past Berlin and the other one was already in the city. So that didn't help us out there. Um, you know, I think. Huh? No, I didn't get it approved with that. We have had our conversation with Walmart corporate. Um, I followed up late last week. They're supposed to be getting back to us at the end of this week with a conversation with their end. At this juncture, I've, I've told them, you know, I think we'd be open to whatever arrangement they're willing to propose and at least give it consideration. So I think we've, we've done all we can in that regard as far as, you know, trying to say, let's figure out a way. Um, so I'll let you guys know as soon as I hear something from that and, and that realm. Um, I have been working on since that meeting at Peterson, I think it became very apparent that pursuing at least that residential neighborhood is going to be a tough sell. I'd had a few residents come to me afterwards who potentially could still be interested, but probably not the, the nexus of individuals that we're going to need to be able to swing any kind of election or potential election. Um, and I think it comes down to the feedback at the meeting was, you know, there's just not enough value for whatever services we're providing or potentially could provide that makes their, uh, that affects the wall in great enough amount to, to change the paradigm in their thinking. And I think that it seemed like, and Mayor, you were there and Debbie, I think you were there. Correct me if I'm wrong. It just seemed like, um, there was this, uh, opposition to any kind of uh, incorporation essentially. They didn't want the city out that way. Um, and I really didn't find good reason for it or good logic, you know, not, nothing against anybody, any opinions they shared. It was just, it just seemed to come down to a money and cents game at the end of the day. Um, so I think I've been kind of drafting out a, a, a potential, um, different direction for us, maybe to offer more incentives for businesses and things that I think one, one strong stakeholder out there has offered to sit down and talk with me additionally, um, owns a residential and a commercial property out there. And his feedback at that meeting was that, you know, we should be targeting the businesses along the Route 33 corridor before we ever get to the Berlin neighborhood. And I, and I can see the argument for that. Um, you know, I think in a natural progression, we're, we're annexing closer to the city boundaries, right? And working our way out. And we know that's not how those, the necessarily things have developed, but, um, so I think that there's, there's reason to say, how can we do that? And, and what kind of incentives could we offer? You know, I think what I'm looking at is kind of, um, paradigm shifting probably for the state of West Virginia in a sense. Um, I think, you know, we got to look at it and see if we, we think we have the, the authority to do it. But it seems like some other municipalities have taken different pieces of it and instituted it in theirs. And, and so what I'm talking about essentially like a, a property tax rebate, uh, for, for folks or commercial properties or annex businesses. Um, and then also, you know, a lowering or removal of the BNO tax, um, for those, for our commercial businesses or commercial, commercial businesses of certain categories within the city limits. Um, but I struggle, I think, and I'm just sharing my personal opinion here. I think it just seemed from that conversation, if, if the commercial businesses have the same mentality as the residents, even at a neutral deal where it costs you nothing, I'm not sure people would still pull the lever for yes. Um, even though, um, I'd said it doesn't necessarily affect you. It just seems like the idea of incorporation is a, a large hurdle. So we'll see, we'll see. So we'll have more conversations about that. Like I said, I think the, the biggest, the first big domino to fall is that, that feedback from Walmart corporate. And we'll see where that takes us and, and then start some more conversations internally. But I appreciated the staff being there and the support, everybody. It was, it was a tough week in the sense of a lot of work. Um, okay. I think that's all I have unless there's any other questions.
Um, you do have a web conference coming up with Region Seven Planning and Development Council for the Riverfront.
Yes, sir. Let us give you a quick update on the Riverfront project. I know has been slow to kind of come to fruition. Uh, Region Seven has been engaged in some capacity at this point to help assist us get through some of the environmental things. Upon their review, they've recommended that we proceed with engaging a, a engineering design firm for the Riverfront. And so we're going to be working on RFP for that to, to get the, that firm engaged. Um, and my intention is try to limit those costs as much as possible because I think that can quickly get out of control. Uh, because we, we do, we do want to have a project, not just to design from all this.
Exactly.
But I think that some of that environmental review stuff requires some kind of idea of exactly what we're doing, where we're doing it to be able to be environmentally reviewed. So we've got to move that mat along. Um, the Columbia Club, I'll mention that one. We did receive, I think, two uh, proposals for architect firms for our planning grant. And so it's HLC. Don't let me forget. That should be on the agenda this, this month for consideration of our selection, um, for that, those architectural services. Uh, we extended that a couple of times and we were only able to get two, two firms to bite. So that, that was in a sense unfortunate, but I think the two we have, one was one we worked with previously. And, and the other was a, one that was recommended through some of the historic network, you know, historic renovation network. So hopefully we've got a good candidate in there somewhere.
Did you see my notes to you to share that information with Olivia with the hubcap?
Yeah.
Okay.
About that stuff. Yeah.
You were volunteered.
Yeah, voluntold. Yeah, understood.
Welcome to my world.
Okay. That's it. I think for real this time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve all department reports.
I move to approve all reports.
A second.
It's been moved and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next, under old business, we have, uh, the ordinance 2024 dash zero one, creating the Weston Land Reuse Agency. If council, uh, so chooses, this would be the first reading of that ordinance. Uh, we have batted this back and forth for quite a while now. And I believe the changes were incorporated that council wanted to see in that, um, land reuse agency ordinance. I do want to talk a few minutes about it. Um, the importance to me just seems to become more imminent than ever. Uh, there is a House Bill 5321 that's been introduced in the legislature. And this would require, um, uh, city governments and whoever applies for the DEP grants, like we got the one for $300,000. It would require a 20% match moving forward. So with a $300,000 grant, it would be $60,000 worth of match. So to me, land reuse again is a way of sustaining and having those monies available so that you can continue the process of taking down more structures in the future. Uh, also the land reuse agencies do have the right of first re- refusal at tax sales. Uh, it's an expedited process for spurring development in your community. You don't have to wait to set up that public auction and you have a little more control over who gets that property. And there is talk about, um, land reuse agencies getting income from property taxes in order to acquire future properties. Are you more familiar with that Nate? Have you heard that toss room? Um, the EDA and I were discussing that and, and I could not see, uh, where a bill was introduced for that, but it is being discussed. Uh, the only one that I am aware of is House Bill 5321 that imposes a 20% match on any grant funds for dilapidated houses. And that does concern me. We're always looking for sustaining our income just to meet regular operational expenses. We've come a long way in being able to have ARPA dollars to help us begin the dilapidated structures, raising those. And we were successful in getting a grant and I'd certainly like to have this as a mechanism to keep the momentum going. That's my two cents worth.
Did that House Bill actually pass?
It is in the second committee right now. So it is moving forward. And I'm sure because, you know, they have limited dollars, just like everybody else, they're having to, to add that measure. So at this point, would council like to take action on having the first reading of 2024 dash oh one, the Weston Land Reuse Agency?
In the past, you said that council would be on it and I noticed that only.
Yeah, that was my, I was also, I didn't know when to bring that up.
Yeah.
Sitting there waiting. Okay.
No, no, that's fine.
Yeah. I, I agree. I think councilwoman Rogers and myself, I think it should be all four of us on.
I do too.
The thing. And you said it originally, we were told we were all going to be on there.
Yes.
It can be. Yes, we can change that right now to put.
Something in Ward one, two, three, four, we have that representation between us and our constituents and the property that's in question. Same thing on me right here.
When I reviewed this, I didn't think the building inspector, no offense, Marty, should be on the, the reuse authority. And, and I think from our, in Charleston, they may be, but here I think our one employee who's going to be working on these issues is that, that person. And so I think that that, yeah. It makes the relationship smoother if they're not on that board.
Uh, if you're not on that board?
Yeah.
I understand. I understand now.
Yeah.
Just now clicked. Yeah.
And so. And frankly, I don't even know if the city manager needs to be on there. I mean, I think it's Charleston does, does have that. But if we're going to take the tack that we want this to be a council heavy bit board and, you know, I think you do have to have certain people on that board from the public and things of that nature. Yeah. It may not be necessary for the city manager.
The only, the only member that's required to be on there is a member of the city of Weston, uh, not a member of citizen of the city of Weston. Otherwise you can put whoever you want to on that board. Just as long as it's between, uh, five and 11 members.
Okay. Okay. What page is that on the members?
Page one fifteen.
That's one five.
So are you wanting to change number four and five to, um, all members of city council?
All members. Yes. Okay.
And then I think Nate wanted to delete number, item number seven. Okay. And number two.
So that leaves one, two, six, seven. That would be seven. I mean, there's only, there's going to be one, two, three, four little prompts, but there's going to be seven members in those prompts. Like prompt one, Mayor Weston. Prompt two would be resident member qualified.
Gotcha. Ray.
Did we get to kick the mayor off?
No.
Not if you want to live.
I don't think so because he is anyway.
Who is?
Si- the city attorney because he's.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. So number one is mayor. Number two is resident. Number three is all members of city council. Number four is director of EDA. Is that how it's going to read, Brian?
That's outreach right now. And it can stay like that if that's what you all sort of desire.
I'll ask again, is council ready to take action on the first reading of ordinance 2024 dash zero one?
I kind of question the EDA. I'm sorry, because.
I think they're supposed to be.
Do we have to have a?
No, the only person supposed to, the only person that's supposed to be on there is the resident of the city of Weston.
Let me chat about that for a second with you.
Okay.
One, I don't think we should just say it's director. I think it should, if we're going to have the EDA involvement, it should be an appointee, right? Because the director may not want to do it or not have the time or something like that. But with the, with an LRA, you know, we're going to pass the Weston or we may pass the Weston Land Reuse Authority Act tonight. And that's for Weston. The county doesn't currently have one.
Right.
We have the ability as the Weston LRA to operate in, outside of Weston's border in the county, if we so choose, with the permission of the county commission. Um, so I think this is potentially a shoehorn for, you know, because we've got properties that are right on our boundaries. If, if we, if annexation doesn't happen, we may want to get involved in a limited fashion in some of those properties and want to, you know, by law, we won't be able to operate outside our, our, our boundaries unless we go to the county commission. I think having that EDA partnership may be beneficial in that regard. Yeah. Yeah. And if they're, you know, advocating, you know, in a crazy world where, well, and if the county was, you know, working against you or something, you, you guys have the votes to outvote them. Either as far as like, you know, the EDA had an agenda or something like that.
So you would like that to state appointed member from the Lewis County Economic Development Authority?
Just add another layer to that. Nominated by the EDA and approved by council.
I don't see a, oh yeah, that's good. I don't really see a problem with the director because he is a direct employee of the commission and answers to the commission and reports back.
I don't have any problem with it either. You just never know what people's workloads are and stuff.
I understand that.
I think you want to give the entity the ability to appoint someone else, you know, who knows? They may hire an assistant down the road and they say, the director's got a lot going on. We want to send the assistant. And then we have to change our law to allow this.
I understand.
That kind of thing.
Um, that makes sense.
Can we put the language in there though, that it could be the director?
I think when you, I think when you say that, when, when the, when the language is person nominated by Lewis County Economic Development Authority and approved by council, person can mean anybody the EDA wants to throw at you.
Okay. Because once again, he answers to commission and reports to commission. And, and a person from the board wouldn't necessarily have to, would they? Or maybe they would if they state that. I don't know.
I'm not the commission's attorney, but I think Ray answers to his board.
He does. But he also reports to the commission as well.
Sure.
You're right. Yes.
But I think the board is the entity at this point that would appoint. But I think the board is the entity at this point that would appoint the representative.
Yeah, you're right. I, I understand that. Okay, thank you.
So number four is going to read. Person nominated by Lewis County Economic Development Authority and approved by council.
Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
And thank you, Nate.
Are we ready? Okay. Is that an applicant? Will, will that be an application process?
I think council appoints the resident. You're appointing the members of the, the authority. It's just that the, the state code for housing authorities or land reuse authorities requires you to have a, a resident. On the board. And there's some certain stipulations like that. I think they have to have the background in. Real estate industry. There's a whole gamut of things like, you know.
Live in the city.
Yeah. That kind of thing.
But again, do, are we just going to pick or are they going to count an application process for that?
It doesn't really say.
Can I give you a sidebar on the application process? Yeah. And this is Nate Stansbury's view, so attorney, feel free to tell me I'm outlying, but. The, the application process to me is something the council has created themselves. When you guys are given the authority to appoint, you have the means and method control of how you're going to appoint people. And you know, that was something I walked into before I got here. You guys had created. Essentially an application process and you wanted some background details, which I think is fine. But I think at the end of the day, it's, you know, it's not, you know. You don't have to take the applications and score them or anything like that. That's just to give you guys some, some background data about who may be interested and you can pick whoever you want to. You know, and if you want to pick somebody who wasn't there and who didn't apply, you could do that. Yeah, well, they show up questionable maybe, but. But you can do, you can do essentially whatever you'd like to do there.
Okay.
You think I'm?
Yeah. And so after in that little, it's, it's now subsection two, but on the, on your chart, it's going to be. Subsection three, resident member as qualified, da da, da da, da da, da da. At the end, add in. And is appointed by council.
Thank you.
Or appoint or approved. Let's put. Let's put approved.
Well, we're appointing.
I think, I think they're synonymous to be honest, but to be honest. We'll keep both appointed.
Okay.
Is there a motion to have the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero two? By title only incorporating the changes. As noted.
Yep, I'll move to approve to have the first reading of. Now I don't have my paper where it says. Ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one. By title only.
Does she have to add as amended or?
As amended, as amended.
Thank you.
During the council meeting. Yes, thank you, Debbie.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and second. Any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephen White?
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gumm?
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis?
Motion carries.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh one, creating the Weston Land Reuse Agency first reading. With incorporating the changes. As in the. Council meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept or reject the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh two. By title only.
I move to accept the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four oh one by title only.
Pause a second.
Hey, it's been moved and second. Any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen White?
Yep.
Councilwoman Debbie Gumm? Yes. Councilman Herb Curtis?
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Okay, next set date for budget work session. Oh no, I'm sorry, police pay scale. I'm down. I'm rushing the meeting.
Alright.
I'm trying.
In your packet, and I apologize, you didn't get it over the weekend. Jet lag got the best of me, but. On page one thirty. In your packet, you will see a step progression system that's been reformulated. Um, essentially what, what has been done here is I brought up. Um, the starting pay of a patrol officer to match the Lewis County's, uh, sheriff's office. Starting pay of forty-four, five hundred. And then from there, each rank got a five hundred dollar increase for the rank. Per, per annum and they've got, you get a five hundred dollar increase per year of service, um, starting out and so. That doesn't seem like a lot, but we're, we're sitting here trying to rearrange this, the chairs on the Titanic team sometimes when it comes to our, our budget. So that's, that's the new system that I'm advocating for. Um, feel free to take a look at those or there's some statements down at the bottom there and actually I. I didn't, uh, update where it says the associate's degree and bachelor's degree. I did revise those down a little bit and the prior military service. So what you're seeing on the career progression system is what I'm going to term the base salary. And then if you flip over. I've added a couple incentives for, um, education. So, uh, officers who have a bachelor's degree would get an additional twenty-five hundred dollars. Per year on their base salary for where they fall in the progression system. If they have an associate's degree, they get an extra twelve hundred and fifty dollars. And, uh, if they have prior military service current or past, I also gave them an additional seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, and they're on, added to their base pay in the progression system. And so, um, you can see our officers there are listed and what their raise would be, what their, you can see what their, um, their old salary was, what their new, proposed new salary is, and then what the raise, the net raise amount would be.
So they also, they are going to get the five hundred annually. But also twenty-five hundred annually?
If they have that, those educational attainments, yes. And so at this point, we're bringing their base level up essentially using these educational and military incentives. Then at this point, they're going to continue to, um. Progress at five hundred dollars a year on the paid progression system.
So that's a one time?
Well, I'm, I'm operating off of this schedule in the front, so they have, they'll have a base pay based on.
One thirty-one.
Right, right. And so. The values for their base salary will come from this page here and then their personal attainments will get factored in off of that base salary. Each year they'll get. Um, that increase on whatever we've set that to be at that point in time.
So for the first year, you get the twenty-five hundred plus the seven fifty military and then the five hundred thereafter, right?
Yeah, well. You're getting it. You come in, you've got a certain rank and a certain level of experience or years of service here. Those officers are going to fall in that, in this. Chart somewhere in this hierarchy. We're going to take that number. And then to figure out their pay, we're going to look at their education and their military service and add additional amounts to that base pay to come up with their salary. At the end of the year. And so that number won't be a one time thing. Each year as they progress. They'll still have those numbers added to their base pay, but if nothing changes, yes, the raise each year will be five hundred dollars.
Not the twenty-five hundred and the seven fifty.
It's already built into it, so they'll get that each year. Yeah. Sorry, am I confusing everybody up?
Yeah.
Okay. They're not getting another, they're not getting another raise on that. They're just, that still gets added to their base pay each year. It doesn't go away.
So when you look at page one thirty-two, the. The difference. Between. What it is and what you're proposing is forty-one thousand, seven hundred eleven.
Correct. Yep.
Per year.
Well, that's from our current F Y twenty-three budget level. We'd have to bring that up forty-one thousand dollars to be able to meet this raise. And let me, let me.
But I thought it was the budget revision was going to be for.
And I think we can cover most of that, like, because we. We're revising our budget to meet this year's anticipated expenditures. We've still got a sixth patrol person salary in there.
That's right.
That, that's not, you know, that we're. They're short.
If, if you were to enact a change this year, uh, let's say that change would take effect March second, that's the start of the pay period. There's only one quarter of a fiscal year left. Um, so the reason that the, the budget adjustment is twelve five is that that's enough to cover the raise for one quarter of the year.
Okay. Okay. So the forty-one thousand is how much we have to come up with per year?
Yep. In addition to what our, our current budget levels are.
That's what I'm. Thank you.
Yeah. Let me, let me speak to the police arrangement a little bit. They. We're, we're setting their base salary, their hourly rate essentially here. Most officers, you know, they, they work overtime, which shouldn't go into this calculus too much because that's additional hours worked. Outside of their, you know, typical employment allotment. But within West Virginia, we have civil service for these officers. And so if they're not scheduled for a shift that day, they still get paid time and a half for overtime those days. And for most of our officers, that will work out to three to five thousand dollars a year in addition. That they're paid due to that civil service law that happened to, you know, we have two options. We can either give them additional time off for time and a half, or we can pay them for it. And they, you know, the way I read the law, you can't get rid of it. So we've always chosen to pay, pay the money out. So that we didn't have a backlog of vacation, then it didn't have any officers. Um, so. When I. You know, I don't want to take anything away that's owed to the police, but. You know, that to me goes into the calculation about where their base pay is. That's a, that's a feature of the job that they're going to continue to, to get in some capacity. Now, some of them will have to work on vacation days or holidays, I should say. And if that's the case, then, you know, they don't get as much money as someone who doesn't, who isn't regularly scheduled on that holiday. But it has a way of kind of equaling out, I think, down through the, through the year. So, you know, if you look at this number and you say, my gosh, fifty thousand dollars, that's not enough for a police officer. Their salary is more along lines, or their expected pay really is going to be around fifty-three to fifty-five thousand dollars. If, if all their base is added up there to fifty, so. I've taken that into it and we, and we typically have paid that out of our overtime allotment in the budget. So that's where those extra funds, for lack of a better word, come from.
We still have a decision to make about the first tranche of opioid settlement funds that we received, right?
Correct. I think we've only received, what, six thousand dollars, something like that? And I think for the time being, we've deposited that check in the police equipment fund, haven't we? Just to, for good safekeeping. But. Yeah, I, I personally, I think you guys should try to find some kind of special. Project for those monies or equipment or something of that nature. I wouldn't use that for any kind of salary increases because it's a, it's a one time shot in the arm.
I understand, but it still helps on the budget.
Yeah. It's your choice. I don't have any problem with it.
They're, they're the ones dealing with it firsthand.
Okay, well, the first thing we need to do is to. Uh, entertain the request from the finance manager to approve the budget revision. Twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
I had one thing to add.
Sorry.
I think just my opinion, the. Value in an education more than training and, and ranks mistake in this industry.
Okay.
And, and.
Just because you got to structure your progression around the industry you're working in. And you're not going to get bachelor and master degree. Candidates applying for a police officer job, which is a, a job that most people run from, so. I think rank and training should. Supersede, uh, an education in this sense.
Uh, we have a couple officers, maybe three, that have a bachelor's in criminal justice right now. I mean, I think that's a pretty severe amount of training, right at the end of the day in, in some sort. It, it was a tough exercise, Herb, I guess I'll try to say, because I think.
Oh no, it looks.
You're trying to make it balanced with our current, you know, really. I'll be very frank with you. Those types of things were just used to try to make it work best for the employees we have right now to fit them the best. And I think moving forward, you know, if we can find some kind of funding mechanism, I think then you get to kind of. Set those earmark things to make it make a lot of sense. Right now, I'm just trying to sort out like, why should this person get paid more than this person? And, and our, our current ranking system, we, we can't really find any logic to, you know. What distinguishes someone from a corporal to a sergeant? And, and in our, our current small department, there's not a whole lot of responsibility change within those ranks. So it just, it made it difficult, I think, to really latch on to those kinds of things and try to give them value versus this or that. And so, you know, at the end of the day, I had one officer in particular at the bottom of the totem pole that I was trying to get to a certain level. And that's what I was looking at and trying to be fair to everybody once I faced it to that.
And that may be one of the reasons though for our turnover. Because there isn't a big difference between. A corporal and a sergeant, so.
Yeah.
Maybe that's something we look at, that you put more meat in the game for each rank instead of there not being much difference.
I don't, I don't disagree. I, I just think the challenge, like those ranks, I think typically in a larger department, right, they're getting more responsibilities for, you know, command responsibilities of, of different, different areas and units and things that. With five, you know, we, we kind of joke about it sometime, but if we keep everybody, at some point, everybody's going to be a captain and have nobody to.
Sure.
Captain over, you know? So that's, that's a struggle, but we'll see. But I think valid point, very valid point.
Yeah. I can add comment.
Sure.
My thought is. It's a positive way to entice them from after. You have two apples, it's last time they both. Now we got to pay because we posed.
Yeah. Yeah, this is an arms race that we're not going to win at this point. We just don't have the resources. So we're trying to make it competitive for the officers. I, I didn't add it to my, my report, but Mike and I did, did have a round table, we'll call it, meeting with them in the office after hours one night and. You know, I was very frank with them. I, you know, you look at the report. This, this month, we had four citations. I said, it's tough for me to justify any increase. Of budget based on the performance and production that we're getting out of the police department. And I think there's valid reasons for a lot of that stuff and we've talked about it. Um, but, you know, there was pushback on those comments for me, but I thought it was. Um, an airing of the grievances. Yeah, there was feelings that they weren't, haven't been supported and to, to certain degrees and. Some fair, some very unfair, I think. Um, but I thought at the end of it, we had a good understanding of what we needed to see performance wise. We won't be a, you know, a Sommersville, West Virginia, the pass where we've got a quota or anything like that, but. I, my message to the police department is, is that. Those citations and those pullovers and those traffic spots or stops are all key performance indicators. And so, you know, you take the thirty spot, thirty traffic spots, stops we had last month. That's, that's one stop a, a day. That's not enough interaction from our police, you know, and it's not necessarily the, the citations that I'm concerned about. It's that public interaction that we're trying to drive as a department. And I think that goes hand in hand with community policing and all those things. And so. We've, we've got to develop a police department that wants to be out there amongst the public. And, you know, I encourage them to.
Put them on horses or something.
Be on horses, yeah. Roller skates, which what we're thinking about. We've got some, we've got seventy pairs over there. But, um. But, you know, being at ballgames, finding time in your schedule, you said you don't have to sit down there and watch every little league basketball game, but. You know, every Sunday, we know that Robert Bland, they're having little league basketball. Can we pop in for twenty minutes and be present? Try to have some interactions, th- th- that kind of thing.
I can remember as a teenager, they used to walk the neighborhoods.
Yep.
On foot, they park and they walk and they would just ca- stop and talk to people. Hey. How's it going? Is there anything like that?
Yeah.
It wasn't being in the department headquarters. It was being out.
Sure. I agree. I agree. So.
Um, do you think we should go into executive session to talk because we're talking about employees?
I don't think anybody specific.
Well, I know, but I think that.
I'm comfortable with what I've said. I'm, and maybe they aren't, but I mean.
Well, I might, I'll be comfortable with what I want to say.
Oh, okay. Well. I say just. Feel free to give me some feedback.
Or questions.
Yeah.
That I might have.
Okay.
I can put any of them.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
I have more questions, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so where are we with the budget revision?
I think we're supposed to, um, approve this budget revision if we are, this is the way I understand it.
Yeah.
If we are in agreement with the, the, the structure, the pay str- pay scale structure that has been presented. That's my understanding. Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay.
So are you saying that we need to wait because you have additional questions?
No, not at all. I was just explaining.
Oh, okay.
To make sure that I understood it correctly.
Earlier, I asked if you guys could, uh, approve the budget revision now. If you're fine with the salary increase, I think we need. Earlier, I asked if you guys could approve the budget revision now. If you're fine with the salary increase, I think we need a motion to approve the budget revision, and then we need a motion for to approve the salary. Yeah.
I'll move to approve the budget revision.
Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the budget revision for twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Dunlap. Councilman Herb Curtis.
Okay, motion carries. Now, we have the proposed police pay scale. Um, are we ready to take action on this, or do you need additional questions answered outside of this meeting?
Yes, I do not. Are you guys ready?
Good.
Move to approve the police pay scale.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved to accept the police pay scale as recommended. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, discussion of goals. List.
For the sake of time, I I think all the goals have been incorporated in my Excel sheet that you guys have for each month. And if there's any kind of question, I I mean, you guys can talk about tonight or not, but I'm just offering to, you know, my office is open. If you want to talk about that list anytime, you're more than welcome to.
I apologize that we got to your office.
Understood. Just let me know a good time, Herb. We'll make some time.
We had only uh. Main rail to.
I think we've just been waiting for a break in the weather and.
Somebody to do it.
Yeah, street department. We we do have a core. I think we bought a core machine, right, Mike, to be able to core the the rocks and stuff. So I think it's just just a matter of getting it, getting it going. Torsion.
Okay, then next, under new business, we have ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh two municipal fee and first do fire fee.
Yeah.
Want to.
I think that we need to spend more time on it. Um, I think that. I've read it over. I'm sure that everyone else has. The um first do fire.
I can hardly hear you, Herb.
Thanks.
Is there a motion to to table that?
I would like another work session soon. I know that we're. To discuss it with uh our fire chief for one, because um. We had talked about it. This is the first time that we've seen it in writing with the changes. And um. I think we need to go over our options. It's not, does not mean that I'm not in full support of a first do fire. I just want to, it's just an important, very important, our fire department is and uh.
Has there been any changes from the last discussion?
Yeah, there is. There there are changes on here. It's.
So is that a motion to uh?
I moved to table until our next meeting.
Work session.
Work session, yes.
Okay. So is there a second?
What's uh?
Okay.
Where's the changes at?
Let me throw a couple things at you. I think that that could use some more discussion. We picked some arbitrary numbers, for for lack of a better word. I mean, these are increases on what our current fees are. We did provide a breakdown that I think could be discussed. Um, and I think there's a direction there where you could sit there and say, we traditionally right now have used a municipal fee to cover three services. We know that two out of those three services are just offered within the city and not outside in the county, and we could change this to more to more reflect the fire fee. And, you know, share that burden of the the cost of the service with the county side in a larger degree. Um, and loo- look at those numbers a little bit further. We also put a square footage price in there for commercial buildings. Um, that I that I personally find a little aggressive, and I'm not against being aggressive, but I think that that could probably could use some discussion, um, because that, I think. From all the other municipalities in our area, we're we would be on the high side. We'd be setting kind of the level, and that may be necessary. But um just as something I think could be discussed. And one thing that didn't make it into this fee that I really think needs to be probably talked about in the ordinance is. Vacant vacant properties, um, and not just vacant buildings, but actual vacant lots. That aren't, you know, contiguous to someone's house or something of that nature, because those are, you know, we've got commercial properties that are vacant, that are vacant lots downtown that pay zero additional fees. For police services, for the streets to get them there, for the sidewalk around their property. Um, and so I think those are property, those are things that may need to be considered in this as well, that I don't think we necessarily speak to, if I remember by by reading it. So. Um. I know time is short. We're already eight o'clock tonight, so I I have no issue with tabling it. My desire, though, is to get this settled before March first, so when we're setting the budget, we we know what we're operating off of.
I completely agree. I don't I don't.
We do.
I understand, but also I not necessarily table to a work session, but because I think we need to have the ability to vote that night. When we iron things up, just like we did with the.
Yeah, and I thought that was a good exercise. Yep.
Tonight, let's do that with fire fee and just put that on the agenda and let's get that ironed out.
I'm fine with that, if you guys are okay with it. Agreed.
So table till a special meeting.
A special meeting. What?
Okay, is there a second to that?
Yes.
I think we're all committed to that.
Okay, it's been moved in second to table until uh scheduled special session upcoming, hopefully in the next week or so.
Yeah, but please review. I mean, this is the this is the backbone of what we're trying to do.
Right.
You know, please review that and and kind of know what we're talking about there, because I think it's important.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is it safe to say we'll uh also take up the members to to that um municipal appeals board at that time? Since we were going to approve.
We approved two tonight, didn't we?
Municipal appeals, yeah, you got to.
Yeah, the fees you approved two tonight.
Okay. Never mind. All right, set date for budget work session. It's late for me.
I'll speak to that real quick. Um, I ask for that to be put on the agenda, the um. Uh, state code says that we have to have a budget meeting sometime between March twenty seventh and March twenty eighth. Um, so asking you to set that date could have waited till next month, but I knew that if I did that, that I would forget to say exactly what I forgot to say during my department report, which was. Um, a lot of the the heavy lifting in that happens between city manager and the finance manager during the month of February. So since it's the beginning of March, February, I wanted to invite the council now um to reach out this month and and talk about your budget priorities with us and be in conversation with us, because. City manager and I, we work a lot on that.
Why don't we just involve that discussion in the fiscal fee work session?
Yeah, we're having a, not work session, special.
Special session.
Yeah.
After.
We do a special session. Um, but I would also love if you would, if you would set a budget budget meeting date for me. Um, I would love March eleventh or March eighteenth, but we can take any date between March seventh and March twentieth.
Mm hmm. Those are Mondays.
It's fine.
Monday, eight, four, everybody, because it just comes alive.
March eighteenth, that's a Monday.
As far as I know. Okay. All right, are we good for moving on?
Time.
Okay, I'd like to thank Barbara McVaney for sticking with us this evening. She brought the information to us uh for Weston to serve as the first POW MIA city in West Virginia. And that information is in your packet. And we met and we talked about the program and thought it was uh really nice and fitting uh to honor our POW. And um. We talked about purchasing two signs for the gateways to Weston at a cost of a hundred twenty five dollars each to support that program. Did you want to say a few words about that program?
Uh, the sign has already purchased two. Uh, sorry, some cities go to. Do the other two. And um, I think it's just an awesome. And I hope uh, I hope you approve. The signs are already in the possession of the city, and the beautiful proclamation is ready. So. Um, I'd like to, after, you know, you all approve all that, uh, report back to uh POW uh MIA UCM, that's in uh, Ferris and Berix, uh, St. Louis, Missouri. And of course, uh, Mr. Pringle's fund, and schedule that unveiling and the reading of the proclamation on August, no, August, April sixth, which will be our. UCM, if we can just plan a ceremony there, would that be all right?
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion uh to support Weston as the first POW MIA city in West Virginia. I am very honored to move that Weston uh support the um. The first POW MI city, MIA city in West Virginia and purchase the two signs for the entryways at a hundred and twenty five dollars each.
I'll second.
Thank you. It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Yeah.
Worked it out with the city. Miss, Mr. Pringle's already um purchased two, so. Absolutely, that's lovely. Thank you. Thank you so.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike. Did Jonathan get a copy of what we had on our agenda? It's uh this one.
May I, did I do a picture of the council giving me a thumbs up so I can say?
Oh, sure. All right.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Barb.
Talk about this ceremony.
Okay, sounds great.
Yeah, there are two. Go ahead and give them two. Yeah.
Okay, next, ordinance twenty twenty four dash oh three ballot order for excess levy on streets.
We had a good discussion about this last meeting, and I I think we can, I'm going to make the recommendation that we table this until the general election discussion. And I would just hang on Councilman Curtis's words from the last meeting, that I think that. By doing that, that leaves open the opportunity for annexation, not an excess levy has a potential to work against us. And so. Um, we wanted to get that in front of you guys, so we appreciate your willingness to consider it, but I think the more we thought about it, just the timing aspects and different things, this is probably the best course of action. So.
Both of them?
Yeah, table them both.
Um, I think with the education, Board of Education levy, it's it's just a bad time. So I agree.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to table both of these ordinances.
Until before the general election or?
Till a future date.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, Peterson Central Traffic Issue and Weston Police Response.
Mike, what's the latest from your discussion with Mr. Paul?
Well, they didn't want out us, right, those people that live out there?
That traffic issues, all of them involved around parents.
Sure.
Gate that they have up. I mean, there were out there last week. They didn't open the gate until, until. That he had reflected accordingly. And that five minutes of time would have eliminated some of that traffic on the road. Now, if they had a special event, you got parents picking up their kids that they always drop off there today, but then you got other parents coming to get their kids at the same time.
Right.
It was flowed when he opened the door. Today, I went out there. I went out there twenty after two. That gate was already open and people were lined up. So the people that showed up at two forty five had nowhere to go. It was partly on the school.
Okay.
At two forty five, when it actually started flowing the traffic at three oh one, the traffic was gone.
So it's something we could work with the school and.
Yeah, I've seen Jerry then, he's been emailing him, trying to get him to back to two forty five. But today, the gate was open at twenty after two.
Is traffic getting stopped at all, though? I mean, is traffic backed up where it stops?
It does.
And for how long?
Starts flowing.
And how long is that typically from when it gets backed up to when it gets flowing?
Fifteen minutes.
Yeah.
The backup is then when somebody gets there. At two forty five and the gate shut, they don't move. The day we was out there, at two forty five, that gate shut, you're getting out of the road. The person front's getting kicked, or you're calling the backup. Once that gate opens, as far as I'm concerned, if they're in the traffic, they're in traffic.
Take them. Start the traffic.
So.
And I advocated for this to be on the agenda because I, I mean, I think from my history with Chief Thomas and with with Chief Posey. In order for this to seemingly work, we've got to be out there putting pressure on these folks every day. Because it seems like we can go out there and tap on the windows and say, hey, you can't be parked on the road, and it may work for a couple days. And then, you know, if we do it on a Monday or Friday, they're back. And that's resources and time we're using out in that neighborhood. Um, we offered, you know, through that annexation's conversation to have more of a presence out there. The people in the neighborhood didn't seem to care, you know, for, uh, I'm just being polite, I guess. Um, so I I like I said, it's a resource that we're expending on a municipal fee. I think Peterson Central, do they do they pay municipal fee, Joe? I think they pay, yeah, the two hundred fifty dollars or whatnot that is a year. So our time and our our revenue generated from that neck of the city. Is is quickly extinguished by presence over there. Two hundred seventy five, right, correct me, sorry. So.
So there's action requested. What do you want?
Well, I I want from you all, do you do you want to continue to see Mike or Chief Posey out there, or want somebody from the police department each day? As as their schedule allows, or do we just want to say it's not our problem and move on? That's kind of the direction I'm looking from you all.
I mean, if they didn't want our annex, I don't know why we'd use our resources to try to alleviate their problem, you know?
Chief Posey, what's your recommendation for council?
I have a problem going out here if I have that.
Right.
I just don't think that's something we can do every single day.
I don't either.
Certain times.
Yeah.
But.
We can't commit to it. I mean, we have um.
I'm getting direct messages online and things of that nature, people complaining about us not doing anything. And so I'm just looking from direction from you all, because I think, and not to try to be the scapegoat, but I want us to have a united. Frontline when when those things come through, what's, you know, as we can.
Resources allow.
It's allowed that the city.
Yeah, right.
Yep, understood. Okay.
Have a solution to the problem. Put them on the bus and let the parents.
At Marketplace, there you go. Run and pick them up at Marketplace.
Okay, and last on the list. Hmm.
Mary, you got that one.
Okay, you have a map of the Arnold Cemetery in your packet, and you've got two blue lines in the middle. Are going across that roadway, and that blue line in the middle, the dark blue line, is showing where Reservoir Street ends. And the very light blue line that goes out to the end of the cemetery, that is an unnamed stretch of road, paved road. So I would like for council to consider, and I've already spoken with uh Steve Money Penny at the nine one one addressing. Uh, we talked about naming it Kelly's Lane, but there is a Kelly's Lane in Jane Lou. And he said it wouldn't be a good idea because uh if there's a response needed, they might go to the wrong Kelly's Lane. So we instead opted for Kelly Spur, and I've talked to Mrs. Kelly and they are. So we instead opted for Kelly Spur and I've talked to Mrs. Kelly and they are happy with the naming of that. And they're quite honored that we're, we will consider naming that Kelly Spur after Junior's efforts. Uh, for years in cleaning and taking care of the cemetery.
I move to approve.
Questions?
Don't, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Kelly speaks, and I hate, hate to bust everybody's bubble here, but that is, he says it's not a street, it's a driveway. Going to that cemetery, so just ask Mr. Bailey, I don't know if we got to adopt that in, in a street for us or not.
It, it's taken care of through the addressing. And we, we looked at that and he looked at the history because he wanted to make sure.
Want to make sure that it's the.
Yeah, and when you go talk to Steve about, uh, Coon's Drive, the issue that you had there, he can explain that to you, but he dug all the maps out. Just to make certain that we weren't adopting something that we, that we couldn't.
Want to make sure it was, was our street.
Yes.
Been told us since then.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next, under reports of city council, I only have a couple of things. Um, I want to thank Marty and Joe for attending the corn meeting with me last evening, which stands for County Recovery Resource Network. And it's a group of people from different organizations and they're talking about, uh, collaborating on ways to, uh, reduce. The homeless and assist with healthy ways for people who are recovering from drugs. And they have their meetings the first Sunday of each month at six o'clock in the double wide in front of Stonewall Jackson Memorial Hospital, so if anybody's interested. They would love to have you. The other thing I want to mention is the drug opioid settlement or the West Virginia First Foundation, they're getting their bylaws together. Um, they voted on the board that will be selected for the thirteen counties that are represented. And I believe the vote ended up that we will get to choose a representative from the city and the county will choose a representative to. Take back our needs to the group. And also, they wanted to discuss the way that the monies were distributed. Joe had mentioned last night about the disparity between some of the other municipalities who are actually smaller in size than Weston, and they received a lot more monies. And we were assured that in the future, they would be looking at a different way. Of doling out those funds to cities and counties across West Virginia. Hopefully, it'll be a more fair and equitable way, but I just wanted to let you know that. And I'll turn it over to Ward one.
Just wanted to thank everyone for all their hard work and, um, thank our constituents for coming out today too and spending your time with us this evening, I appreciate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very nice.
Thank you. It's good to hear. Steven, you're up.
Yeah, um, I'd like us to thank the Street Department first and foremost for all the snow removal. I know it's not fun, uh, for anybody. I also want to thank the PD and EMS for their hard work. I know recently, uh, we had an incident yesterday up in, in Ward two where we had, uh. The EMS respond with an ambulance and such and, um, got a, one of my neighbors moving, so that was good, um, much appreciated, and you know that. A lot of the wanderers, if you will, uh, have disappeared in Ward two, um, appreciate it, Chief Posey, I'm not sure, uh, indirectly or directly impacted there, but again, greatly appreciated, I know. Our ward, we, we, uh, have been prioritized by the, uh, by the code enforcement, not for good reasons, of course, but.
Okay, Ward three.
Um, I'd like to echo the sentiments of Councilwoman Rogers and Councilman White with the, um, snow removal. And trust me, I take care of my aunt on Edgewood, which is kind of like the first state street after ours, and it took them two days to plow that. And it wa- it was terrible, so it was a, a great effort on the part of our street department. I would like to ask our fire department to hang with us. Okay, we're, we're, we're going to look at it and go over it and make sure it's just right for you guys. Um, I like to thank our staff, everybody's worked hard, um. But I also like to remind you of some upcoming things, we do have the, uh, chocolate feast on Saturday, and this is the main fundraiser for the Museum of American Glass. And it's probably the most tasty fundraiser you'll ever attend, so if you like chocolate, be sure to come out and support that.
You don't want to miss that one.
I've already started making my chocolate, so, um, but let's just keep things moving, let's mark some things off this list right here. I'd also like to thank the code enforcer for working on our problems on Cemetery Street, I think we finally got that rectified down there. And hopefully we can get the situation in Shady Brook taken care of as well, so thank you for that.
Ward four.
All I have to say is thank you, Debbie. Now, I would like to thank the Street Department as well for the snow removal. Jimmy, I'm sorry, I apologize to you, I tried to get the first due fire going tonight, but Sherry. Put a stop to that. And would like to thank Mariah as well, uh, Marty for the cat removal, especially all their own Len and McGary additional, there, there's been a lot of properties, as you're aware, it's been damaged due to all the cats. Yeah, it's just horrible over there, it's horrible. But, uh, yeah, appreciate everybody's time and their efforts and all you guys are doing, Nate, I didn't, wasn't trying to butcher your, uh, progression for the police, I think you did a good job with it, I just, I seen the.
It was kind of an impossible task, but, yeah.
Yeah, so thank you for working on that. And with that, I move to the jury.
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.